Thank you for joining us this evening. Regular scheduled meeting of the Park City City Council on February ninth, 2021 at seven P. M. Marlo, would you call the roll?
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Sausetta.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. This evening Pastor Chuck Peters is going to lead in the invocation and Councilmember George Glover is going to lead in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Mayor, honorable members of the council, staff, those great. Heavenly Father, thank you for today. Father, we just ask that we look for the blessings and thank you for those we see and those we don't see. We thank you for this day, the moisture. Father, we thank you for the bitter cold temperatures which help keep the insect population down. Father, we just would ask for your presence here among us. Father, we also would pray for our national leaders at this time. Father, that we pray for our president, we pray, Father, for the Congress, we pray, Father, for wisdom as they make good decisions. Father, we also pray for our state elected officials. And Father, we just take this time to lift up our city council to you, or mayor and city council to you. Father, we ask for your wisdom in their decisions. And Father, we pray that your will be done. Lord, we also take this time to lift up our first responders, responders. Father, we pray for our police, we pray for our firemen, we pray, Father, for our EMS, we pray, Father, for those who cleared the roads. Father, we also just take this time to pray for protection, Father, of the, from this pandemic and all other illnesses for all of the council and staff and employees of the city. Now, Father, be with us as we hear these proposals. Give us wisdom. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let it be to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. George?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Jim?
My seconded that.
We've got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. Tonight, under awards and presentations, the chief has a couple of promotions. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. This evening, it's my pleasure to announce a couple of promotions within the police department. And so we'll begin with office, I'm sorry, corporal Chris Shields. Corporal Shields has been with the Park City Police Department since September twenty-sixth of 2013. So he's done a great job here. We're very honored and glad to have him here. He's been a corporal now for a while and is going to be moving into a shift supervisor position as sergeant. So it's my pleasure, Chris, to present you with your badge. I'll shake your hand, but keep the social distance. Congratulations. Officer Haas, if you want to come on up. Officer Cole Haas has been with the Park City Police Department since March thirtieth of 2018. Officer Haas has done a great job for us. He's worked third shift most of the time that he's been here, I believe, and is still currently on the third shift. He's been promoted to the rank of corporal. Corporal is the second in command on a shift and is in charge when the sergeant is gone. And it's also a leadership building position. So Officer Haas, my pleasure to present you with your corporal badge. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Next on the agenda, we have public comment. Len Warren is here this evening. Len?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Can we pass this around a little? We're so far behind, I didn't.
Shant?
We didn't get, I need one. Okay. I'm afraid I didn't get them here sooner and I should have. Oh, by the way, my name is Len Warren. I live in sixty-two thirty-three Millsboro, and I'm director of the Park City Public Library. Each year, we're required to file about a twenty-two-page report with the state library. And I thought you all might be interested in some of the numbers we come up with. I kind of boiled it down into a one-page infogram for you because most of the twenty-two pages we fill out for the state, unless you're a librarian, they make no sense to you. They're really something you don't really care about. But what we do care about is the library this year had two thousand six hundred and fifty-two hours that we were open in 2020. That's down some because we did close for three weeks on COVID. Then I decided I'm there every day anyway, we might as well be open. And after that three weeks, your Park City Public Library has been open every day except Saturdays where we're trying to keep kids down because I don't know how to keep kids six feet apart. If you're not going to do that, let me know and we'll open back up on Saturdays. We have twelve hundred and one people who currently carry a library card within the limit, city limits of Park City. Outside of the limits of Park City, we have about seven hundred and fifty more library cards that have been, that are active. We have thirty-three thousand people walked through the door last year. In addition, we had two thousand one hundred and eighty-four website visits. That's probably pretty down because we switched web vendors in the middle of the year and so we lost a big count. We have twenty-eight thousand six hundred and two printed books in our library. And the collection contains two hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and sixty-eight items by the time you count all the electronic materials that we have because we share a lot of electronic books with the state library. There's five thousand five hundred and forty downloads of eBooks. And we contributed to a total of twenty-eight thousand one hundred and nineteen checkouts for the year. And when you remember that we only have seventy-five hundred citizens in Park City, it's pretty good. It's like eight books per person per year. We lent out eighteen hundred and thirty-three of our items and we borrowed three thousand and ten items from other libraries. We had thirty-five hundred and fifty uses of the public internet computers. And that's down this year because we have half of them closed and we have six-foot spacing at the computers. So of our ten internet public use computers, we only have five available for most of the year. We had nine hundred and forty-six wireless sessions. And we had three thousand five hundred and fifty uses of the public internet computers. Unfortunately, when you get down to our programs, we only had thirty-two total programs that happened before COVID with a hundred and twenty-eight people in attendance. And they didn't count summer reading on that this year, but we did online summer reading. And we had a hundred and twenty or a hundred and thirty students sign up for summer reading. And all of them participated by sending someone in once a week to pick up their materials. And it was, for us, it was very good. We've never done a totally online summer reading program before, but we were very happy with the results. We're going to try it again this year and we hope to do as well, if not better. So if we, anybody have any questions? Besides this little handout, I also included this handout which gives you a little further numbers.
Len, just real quick, can you touch base on a couple of the book clubs that you have? And then also, just real quick on the passport service that you're offering?
Okay, we have currently two book clubs that are running. We have the Women's Lit Guild. They meet on the second Wednesday of the month. They're not going to meet tomorrow, though. They're afraid it's a little too cold for everybody to get out. They average twenty-two to twenty-three people every month, except during COVID, those numbers have been way down because we didn't, they're mostly retired women that belong to that because they meet in the middle of the day on a Wednesday. But we're, they still managed to get all the books checked out and the books read. So that's pretty good. The other book club we have has never been, had a very good attendance. We currently have three members that attend on a regular basis. It's called Novels at Night. This month, we're reading When I Was the Greatest, which is a young adult novel. I'm only about halfway through it, but I think it's a pretty good book. Next month, the women are reading The Book of Lost Names about a woman who changed all of the adopted babies' names for babies she rescued during World War II. And now, forty years later, how she's helping them all find out what their real names were. That's an interesting book as well. For passports, they're starting, we're starting to get busy again. We've gotten down to where if we did one passport a month, we were pretty lucky. But since there's a vaccine out, we, I did four passports today. So it's really picking up and taking off again. So people think they're going to get to travel soon. So if you need a passport, come see us. We'll help you get it figured out.
Does anybody else have any questions for Len? No?
We really enjoy being over there and we like to see anybody come in and see us.
And it only takes minutes to sign up to get a library card, right?
We don't even ask you to fill out any forms. Just bring me your driver's license and I'll do all the paperwork. So if you have anything else, those, if we can find a book for you that you don't think we have, give us a try. We've borrowed books from England to get in. In fact, it was your predecessor. We got a shipping manifest from England. So it showed some of his family where they came over. And he had to come to the library and read it with white gloves on, but he got it.
Nice.
We just received the update on the Furley dump site. If anybody remembers, the Furley Waste Management System going on over there. We are the federal repository for that waste management system. So that's done by, they do a concentric circle around wherever the site is. And the first library they hit becomes the repository for all of the data. So we have four different waste sites that we're the repositories for.
George?
Is that still a hot site up there at Furley?
It's getting much better.
But it's still hot?
Yes, it's, I don't know if anybody knows how that's done. You know, they have to move all that stuff out of the dump and they put down a containment system and then they put all the dump back and then they pump water into it and pump it out and pump it in and pump it out. And it's quite a process. And they're looking at another forty years maintenance on it.
I'd just like my comment, and it's slow this year because of the illnesses going around. But in regular years, kids programs up there, it's the only place you go that the kids are screaming when their parents are trying to drag them out of there. They don't want to leave the library. So Len's doing a good job.
Yeah.
They want to stay.
Thank you very much, Len. Appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
All right. All right, we'll move on to staff reports and we'll hear from our city administrator, Sean Fox. Sean?
Good evening, Mayor and council. First, congratulations to Matt, our audiovisual and social, social media coordinator in the back. He and his wife just had a baby boy four days ago. And from what I understand, Ryden and Kelsey, mom, are doing just fine. And the sister, Aspen, approves. So as you all know, on January twenty-seventh, we held two separate events for the downtown visioning public engagement phase. The first was at Chamber of Commerce luncheon and then later on that evening here at the City Administration Center. Since then, their survey has been posted both to our city's Facebook page as well as our website. And as of this morning, we have about a hundred and seven survey responses on that. So so far, the turnout's been very good. Citizens are encouraged to provide their ideas and their opinions on the online survey until February fifteenth. And for those listening at home, if you'd like, the address is www.surveymonkey.com/r/parkcitydowntowndistrict. Next up, we have next week. This is unfortunate. AT&T will be doing some underground infrastructure work between Prospect and Broadway on Sixty-first Street, such that it will require them to shut down both lanes. The manhole is in the southbound lane, or the south lane, and the manhole cover is in the north lane. And so they have to shut them both down. Right now, it's projected to be shut down from August, or from February fifteenth to the nineteenth, but that is weather dependent. Hopefully, they'll be able to get it done in a couple days, but they've allocated four days. So there will be detour signs and closing signs and we'll get those posted on the website as well. So as far as the new Sixty-Ninth Street water line, it was completed last week and all the former rural water District Two customers, they have on, along Santa Fe and Mosley, those have all been converted over and switched to Park City Water meters. So, and then finally, the last one is the sewer project along Broadway. When Amazon came along, we promised them that they would have the sewer in place, that they could make their connections by March first. And as of now, the sewer line is pretty much complete. About the only thing that they need to do is go back and make some repairs along Broadway because they've torn it up badly. So there will be pavement and cleanup repairs. But it was three weeks ago that they were already north of the Amazon building to where they can go ahead and connect. So that's a good deal as well. That's all I have, Mayor.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions for Sean? Ben?
In addition to the Survey Monkey website that you gave out, they can also go to the Park City KS website and find the link to it there. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is the direct website link, but if they go to our website, that is correct. We have a link down at the bottom of the page.
That's just www.parkcityks.com, right?
Dot gov.
Dot gov. I keep forgetting that part. Okay, cool.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Sean. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
That brings us to a consent agenda. Is there a motion?
To approve the consent agenda as presented?
Ben?
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. That brings us to item six under new business, which is discuss and consider an appointment to the Stormwater Management Advisory Board. This recommendation came from Ben. So Ben, I'll let you roll this one out.
Sure. So I met with this young man a couple of months back and he had expressed interest in serving in the community there. Been here for a couple of years and wanted to find out what boards and such were available that he could, he could look into. And so I recommended he come down here and talk and find out. And so that's how the application came across for the Stormwater Board is we had a vacancy still left open for that one.
Okay.
So with that, I'd go ahead and make a motion to appoint DeQuaz Irving to the Stormwater Board, Management Advisory Board, sorry.
And Melvin?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. That brings us to item seven, which is discuss and consider a proposed change of zoning district classification from the C-two Service Business District to the L-one Light Industrial District for a property located south of Fifty-third Street North and east of Broadway Avenue. This is case number Z-2020-04. Sean?
Yes, sir. Russ was unable to be here tonight, so I'll muddle through it and see if we can get there. Golden Plains Credit Union is the owner of the property located south of Fifty-third and just east of Broadway, otherwise known as lots three, four, five, six, and seven of block two of Wally World Edition Park City Cedric County. And Carlos Robles is the contract purchaser. They are requesting approval of a zone change from I-one Light Industrial District for the relocation of a trucking business. The subject property is approximately two point eight acres in size and is currently zoned C-two commercial. The stated intention for the subject property is for a trucking business relocation to Park City, and the zone change was to facilitate the outdoor parking of multiple semi-truck trailers. The future owner has plans to build a building on the site, but it's undetermined at this point in time where that would go. The request was first heard on December twenty-first last year by the Planning Commission. At that time, there were several property owners who did voice concerns over the proper use of the site. Concerns over screening, hours of operation, noise, light trespassing, all of them were raised. And the Planning Commission decided to table it at that time and then revisit it during their January meeting. On January twenty-fifth, the Planning Commission heard testimony from the applicant and again, two area property owners before recommending of approval of five to zero, subject to conditions of a protective overlay. The seventeen findings are fact are there in the staff report. Staff recommends approval of the request, subject to the following conditions of a protective overlay. One, the subject property shall be provided six-to-eight-foot solidwood screening fence along the common lines of lots number nine and eleven, which are Broadway Heights addition, as long as the properties remain residential. Parking areas with the subject property shall be paved in accordance with city standards, specifically concrete or asphalt concrete drive openings onto public streets, but they may utilize dustless materials for truck and trailer parking areas. The parking of trucks and trailers and the outdoor storage and materials shall be prohibited within thirty feet, the south thirty feet of the subject property. All outdoor storage areas shall be contained by a solid screening wall or fence or within portable storage containers. All exterior lighting sources shall employ cutoff luminaries to minimize light trespass and glare and shall be shielded to direct light dispersment in the downward direction. The height of the poles shall be limited to twenty feet, including the base, within one hundred foot of abutting residential zone properties. There shall be no truck parking oriented to the west to minimize headlight glare from impacting residents across Broadway. Overnight idling of trucks is prohibited and trailers with refrigeration units are prohibited. And as council is aware, there are three suggested motions, or excuse me, four, either approve the zone change and protective overlay as presented, deny the zone change as presented with alternate findings of fact, approve the zone change and protective overlay with modifications and/or additional conditions, or return the case to the Planning Commission for further information.
Thank you, Sean. Does anybody have any questions? There a recommendation from the council? Brandy?
Make a motion to approve the zone changes and protective overlay as presented and adopt ordinance, ordinance one-one-one-four-dash-2021.
Tom?
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? No? Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lynn here.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that ordinance passes eight zero. Thank you very much, Sean.
Yes, sir.
That brings us to item eight, which is discuss and consider a proposed zoning or change of zoning district classification from R-one Single Family Residential District to the I-one Light Industrial District for the property located at seventy-four hundred North Broadway. This is zoning case twenty-twenty dash zero-five. Sean?
Yes, sir. The next two items go hand in hand together. The first one is for rezoning. LNP Properties LLC is the owner of the property located at seventy-four hundred North Broadway. And it's the agent of, and its agent, Baughman Company, P.A., are requesting approval of a zone change from, to the I-one Light Industrial District for the development of industrial uses. The subject property is approximately twenty acres in size and is currently zoned R-one Single Family Residential. Although there is no stated intention for the subject property at this time, the application area is surrounded by rapidly developing warehousing and distribution uses that could expand onto this track. During the December twenty-first, twenty-twenty public hearing, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the request, subject to the conditions, with a vote of five to zero. There were no protests filed against this application. And again, your PAC has the seventeen findings of fact. And then there are And again, your PAC has the seventeen findings of fact, and then there are the four recommendations that staff has, which is recommending approval, subject to the following conditions. The subject property shall be platted prior to obtaining any building permits. The property shall plat a one-hundred-foot building setback along the north property line. Any traffic improvements required as part of the development of the subject property shall be the responsibility of the landowner, and financial guarantees shall be submitted to the city as part of the plating process. And then finally, the city shall withhold the publishing of the zoning ordinance until the plat is recorded.
Thank you, Sean. Tom?
I was gonna say, I'll make a motion that we approve, or I'll move that we approve the zoning change as presented and adopt ordinance number eleven-fifteen-dash-twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, Ben?
I second. I just had a real quick question on there. This is the lot that is gonna be just to the north of where Amazon's.
It is the direct adjacent to the north, twenty acres of Amazon. Yes, sir.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further questions. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lynn here.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that ordinance passes eight zero. Thank you, Marlo. That brings us to item nine, which is discuss and consider approval of the Broadway Industrial Park Second Edition final plat for the property located at seventy-four-hundred North Broadway Avenue. This is case number SDFP-twenty-twenty-one-dash-zero-one. Sean?
Yes, sir. Again, the owners, LNP Properties, as well as its agent, Baughman Company, are requesting approval of the final plat entitled Broadway Industrial Park Second Edition. Again, mentioned, it's a twenty-acre parcel just north of Amazon, rezoned as I-one light industrial. And as the December twenty-first, twenty-twenty Planning Commission, they heard the meeting and recommended approval, five zero. There is no identifiable cost to the city for approving the plat, and staff makes a recommendation for approval with the four following conditions. A drainage plan shall be approved by the city per Article five dash one oh one. The applicant shall provide financial guarantees to the city for any traffic improvements as required as part of the development of the subject property prior to recording the plat. Any utility relocation required as part of the development of the subject property shall be at the responsibility of the landowner. And then four, finally, the applicant shall revise the final plat to show a one-hundred-foot building setback along the northern portion of the subdivision.
Tom?
Again, I would move that we approve the final plat as presented.
Okay. Jim?
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. Thank you again, Sean.
Yes, sir.
I would ask for a five-minute recess so that we can come back as the land bank. Ben?
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn, or recess, sorry, for five minutes.
And John? Okay, got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. All right, we are reconvening as the city council, and that brings us to item twelve, which is discuss and consider a resolution determining the viability of making improvements in the Prairie Hills Edition Phase Six water distribution. Sean?
Yes, sir. The attached petition was filed with the city clerk proposing improvements to the city's water distribution system. The petition was signed by the owner of records of more than one-half of the area liable for the assessment. The improvements include water distribution system, including necessary water mains, pipes, valves, hydrants, meters, and appliances to serve the area described in the improvement district, all in accordance with city standards and plans specifications prepared by and approved by our city engineer. The estimated or probable cost of proposed improvements is sixty-two thousand four hundred dollars, with said estimate cost to be increased at a prorata rate of one percent per month from and after the date of adoption of this resolution authorizing the improvements. The improvement district identified is lots fifteen through twenty-one, Block Four, and lots twenty-six through thirty-three, Block Five, of the Prairie Hills Edition to the City of Park City Cedric County, Kansas. The method of assessment is equally between all lots. The apportionment of the cost of the improvements between the improvement district and the city is one hundred percent, being assessed against the improvement district and zero percent to be paid by the city. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Brandy?
Make a motion to approve Resolution ten sixty-one-dash-twenty-twenty-one, a resolution determining the advisability of making certain internal improvements in the City of Park City, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for making of the, for making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, water improvements, Phase Six Prairie Hills Edition.
George?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Not seeing any. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lynn here.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that resolution passes eight zero. Thank you, Marlo. That brings us to item thirteen, which is discuss and consider a resolution determining the advisability of making of improvements in the Prairie Hills Edition Phase Six paving improvements.
Yes, sir. Petition was filed with city clerk proposing paving improvements to Prairie Hills Edition Phase Six. The petition was signed by the owner of record again, and more than half of the area liable for the assessment. The improvements include the construction of pavement on Meadow Hills Street with drainage to be installed where necessary to serve the area described as the improvement district, all in accordance with city standards and plans and specifications prepared and approved by the city engineer. The estimated or probable cost of the proposed improvements is one hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred dollars, with the estimated cost to be increased at a prorata rate of one percent per month from and after the date of adoption of this resolution authorizing the improvements. The improvement district to be assessed for the cost is lots fifteen through twenty-one, Block Four, and lots twenty-six through thirty-three, Block Five, Prairie Hills Edition to the City of Park City Cedric County. Again, equally assessed between all lots, one hundred percent against the improvement district and zero percent to the city. Again, staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Sean. Brandy?
Move to approve Resolution ten sixty-two-dash-twenty-twenty-one, a resolution determining the advisability of making of certain internal improvements in the City of Park City, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for making of improvements in accordance with such findings, paving improvements, Phase Six Prairie Hills Edition.
And Jim?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Not seeing any. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lynn here.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that resolution passes eight zero. Thank you, Marlo. That brings us to item fourteen, which is discuss and consider approval of the design and construction engineering contracts for paving, sanitary sewer, water, and stormwater drainage for the Ironstone Village Edition Phase One. Sean?
Ironstone Village Phase One is located west of Hillside and south of Sixty-Ninth Street. The developer, Elite USA LLC, presented the petitions for paving, sanitary sewer, water, and stormwater drainage improvements back in August of last year, and they were approved by the council, subject to receiving a required letter of credit. Attached are the associated contracts for K.E. Miller Engineering for the design and construction engineering, twenty-one thousand dollars for paving, ten thousand five hundred dollars for sanitary sewer, six thousand eight hundred dollars for water, and twenty-one thousand dollars for stormwater drainage. It is authorized, funded via temporary financing, followed by long-term general obligation bonds. Staff recommends approval and authorizing the mayor to finalize and execute the contracts with K.E. Miller Engineering in the amount not to exceed fifty-nine thousand three hundred dollars.
Thank you, Sean. Ben?
I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute contracts with K.E. Miller Engineering, P.A., in an amount not to exceed fifty-nine thousand three hundred dollars to be paid out of the capital project fund.
George?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Tom?
Because there may be an appearance of conflict, even though there's not, I'll be abstaining on this.
Okay. All right, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstained.
Abstained.
And that motion passes seven zero one. That brings us to item fifteen, which is discuss and consider the approval of expenditures to replace the Eighty-Fifth Street Tower, Column CM Tower, and Window Tower vents. Simon?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So during the last city council meeting, we discussed the KDHE inspection that we received, and one of those findings from KDHE was the vents were not in compliance with the KDHE regulations. So I reached out to a few different contractors to get quotes on these vent replacements. My recommendation is utilizing SUEZ to perform the replacement of the noncompliant vents at the total cost of two, twenty-two thousand nine hundred and nine dollars to be paid out of the, the utility fund water, water department.
Jim?
Just have one question. That's not the low bid.
It is not. So Pittsburgh Tank out of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, they submitted a bid. They didn't come inspect the bid. I'm afraid if we go with that bid, there's, there's gonna be change orders associated with that because they don't know the actual condition of the tanks themselves. All the rest of the contractors actually did onsite visit and inspect, inspection of the tanks to perform that estimate.
Anybody else? Ben?
I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve the quote from SUEZ in the amount of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and nine dollars for water tower vents to be paid out of the utility fund water department.
Tom?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to item sixteen, which is discuss and consider an ordinance amending the municipal code relating to speed limits along Eighty-Fifth Street North. Doug?
Mayor and council, in, in December, you adopted a, a fairly comprehensive modification of the speed limits in the city. We do that by amending the standard traffic ordinance, and that's section fourteen dash two oh two of our municipal code, amending section thirty-three of the standard traffic ordinance that we adopt, and for, for almost all purposes, that's the traffic ordinance that our police department enforces within the city. The biggest thing that we talked about at that time was the twenty, twenty-five mile an hour speed limit in residential districts, which was lowered from thirty, and there were a few other changes, one of which was, was a recommendation that Eighty-Fifth Street from the west city limits to the east city limits be set at forty miles an hour. That was adopted. Subsequent to that, staff received significant concerns from residents in the area that that was really too slow, that that street, its width, and its general nature and the general traffic flow on it was probably more appropriate at fifty-five miles an hour, which it was prior to the adoption of the ordinance in December. The police department set up their equipment and did a study of the traffic that, that passed over Eighty-Fifth Street, and the mean speed limit, the mean speed of vehicles along there was fifty miles an hour. The mean speed of vehicles along there was fifty miles an hour. The ordinance in front of you deletes the section that talked about Eighty-Fifth Street specifically and established forty miles per hour. What that leaves is that now the speed limit on Eighty-Fifth Street will be as posted. The intention is to post it at fifty-five. But if we had any reason to do anything different than that in the future, we wouldn't have to come back and amend this ordinance. We can do that because the ordinance provides that speed limits in the city are either as set forth in the section fourteen two oh two or as posted. In this case, we're going to post Eighty-Fifth Street, and the intention is to post it at fifty-five miles per hour.
Thank you, Doug. Jim?
Well, thank you for looking at this. I was one that called in, so I appreciate that. And I would move to approve ordinance number eleven sixteen dash twenty twenty-one, amending section fourteen dash two oh two of the municipal code of the City of Park City relating to maximum speed limits and repealing the original of said section fourteen dash two oh two.
John?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Tom?
I have a concern with fifty-five miles an hour up there with the developments going in with Camper World there. Stuff going in on the other side of, you know, where the Coliseum was, having activities going there. And now west of Camper World, they're developing that, and there's going to be a road coming out in there. We've got other parts of town that we're reducing to forty that have probably similar traffic and no ingress into the street, you know. I'm just struggling with forty miles an hour in the major part of town. And in one area, we put a mile at fifty-five miles an hour. We've been going the other way in different parts of town. And I don't know why we would go higher than what they're actually running up there. If the speed limit's fifty, why do we do fifty-five?
The speed limit's fifty-five. It was when we made the change. That was just a study. Speed limit was posted fifty-five through that section.
Well, hydraulic, for example, south of the old city hall over here used to be fifty-five, and then it got reduced to forty-five by the county. Then we reduced it to forty, and part of it's forty-five. Most people go forty-five through there. We're going to drop it all to forty. It just seems like we're being counterproductive in some parts of town when forty-five would be a good flow, so. And fifty-five up there, we're going the other way. That's what I'm saying on Eighty-Fifth Street. And that is a developing area, so.
Jim?
Well, this is a street I drive every day, several times a day. So it's a center, it's a four-lane road with center-turning lanes. There's a lot of space on the east side of one thirty-five. Yeah, you've got the the old Coliseum. And there's not much traffic coming in and out of there. And there's, the traffic isn't an issue east of it, I can tell you. West of it is where we're talking about some more development. You, I would, I would think you'd be hard pressed to get up to fifty-five on the west side by the time you stop at Broadway, speed up, and then have to slow down at Interstate. Because, you know, nearly everybody gets on at Interstate. That's the only reason I'm okay with the fifty-five. And, you know, and I kind of like where we left ourselves some room as this develops to change it, but.
And I understand that this can be changed. But it just seems like we're starting at more than we need, so. Higher rate than it ought to be, so, anyway.
Ben?
My opinion.
Sure.
Chief, you're the expert here on this. What do you feel? What's your thoughts on the fifty-five there in that area? Is it sufficient as recommended?
I tend to go with the eighty-fifth percentile rule. I think that's pretty much a standard, not only in the United States, but across even in the industrial world. And the eighty-fifth percentile speed in this case was fifty. So that would be my opinion. I tend to go with eighty-fifth percentile. It's the, I think the science goes with that. There's a lot, usually there are a lot of feelings and opinions, and I understand those, you know. But eighty-fifth percentile is pretty solid across the country.
And so with that disordance, though, it gives us the ability to change it later on without having to go back through the whole entire process that we're doing tonight. So if development, sorry, if development became an issue west side that we're mentioning, it can be easily changed to fit the need, right?
Yes, my recommendation is, no matter what the discussion is about what fifty, fifty-five, where or what segments of Eighty-Fifth Street, is adopt the ordinance. Because right now it's forty, and adopting the ordinance will make it as posted. And we can post it however we wish to post it.
It seems like, I mean, it doesn't seem like fifty-five is out of the question on this or even incorrect. And the ability to change that anytime by adopting this ordinance makes sense. So I'd be in favor of it as presented. Just wanted to get your opinion there as well as the one that will be enforcing this.
George? Jim? Tom?
Well, people coming from the east on Eighty-Fifth Street, they'd be coming out of, they're coming out of a fifty-five mile an hour zone, and it's hydraulic, then they're dropping to forty. That's a pretty good drop, and common sense tells you people are not going to do that. They're just going to keep right on. Keep right on going. I don't see a problem with it.
Okay, Jim?
Just a follow-up question, chief. Where do we do the traffic study, east or west of one thirty-five? Do you know? I could see it being slower on the west side.
I think it was on the west side, and that's going off of my memory on this case. But we did several all at once when we were talking about the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit in the residential areas. So we not only did residential, but we did some other areas too. So I think it was west. I'd have to go back and double-check that.
Okay, I was just, I'm listening to everybody, so that's all I had.
Tom?
I'm going to support the ordinance. I just don't agree with the speed limit.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Marla, would you call the roll?
John Lynn-Hare.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Saucetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that passes eight zero. Thank you, Marla. That brings us to governing body report, and we'll start with Brandy.
I have nothing.
Melvin?
I have nothing.
George? Glover?
Once again, the City of Wichita Emergency Assistance Program will be taking applications for next month. And I'll leave that information with staff here, but the phone number to call is four six two three seven seven five. Also, I don't know if anybody knows about the LEAP program. It's available for people in the spring for help with utilities, gas or electric utilities. It's a low-income energy assistance program. You can go to the DCF website and find out more information about that. That helps with gas or electric, and they are accepting applications through March thirty-first. Thank you.
George Capps?
Yeah, I just, I don't know why it struck me, unless of this discussion on Spade. It just popped in my mind. But I remember many years ago, the Kansas Turnpike had an eighty mile an hour speed limit. And I'm really a date myself. That was a long time ago. But their motto was the fastest posted speed limit in the United States and the best safety record. And that was true. You know, it's the steady flow of traffic catching up to speed.
Ben?
Yeah, so Cedric County just now, recently, I think yesterday, lowered the vaccination age to seventy-five. So if you are wanting to get vaccinated there, that option is available now for those residents seventy-five and older. I know it's frustrating at times when we're looking to see what's going on in other areas around us as to why we're having such a slow rollout. But that aside, I encourage you, if that is something that you would want to do, make sure to contact the health department there and reach out to get that taken care of, if you would like. The other thing is, we're obviously getting ready to deal with some very, very, very cold weather over the next couple of days. Make sure you take proper precautions there at home. You don't want busted water pipes, or outdoor ones for that matter. I told Simon that if we have a busted water pipe, we can maybe do an ice skating rink out there where it does to raise money for fixing that. But make sure to take care of that, and take care of your pets, please. Don't leave them outside in this cold weather. That's it.
Thanks. Tom?
I was going to add that George's two thirty-five used to be eighty-two, and one thirty-five through town was seventy when it opened, so. And that wasn't that long ago.
Jim?
Happy Valentine's Day in a few days. Happy President's Day. Stay warm. See you in a few weeks.
John?
I have nothing. I'd make a motion to adjourn.
And Ben?
Second.
Just real quick, we discussed last time about a workshop, and we will send out a message about that of possibly having that next council meeting the hour before. So as long as we have data from other cities, we'll send an email out and let you guys send a message in if you want the meeting at that time, and we'll go from there. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes six, eight zero. Thank you very much.